Okay, let's start. So, the one minutes, the one minutes that I sent around. Okay. No, no comments. Oh, there you go. I'm not, I'm not. That can work. I'm just kidding. So, I think, I think someone's like. There, oh, wait on, there it is.
Hold on.
It's like three.
Yeah.
Move on, move on, Mike, yeah. I think the motion that I've got here, my first. Okay, I think I'm. Oh, hold on, hold on. More on that. So, um, update my 72 provisions of Pat Ford. I think I had that intended before we had the discussion from, from, I don't know, Sett Paul. So, there could be some slightly different comments in there as well. But I guess the main thing was, was just, I was just trying to head on here, check out where we stood. Now I have new comment, he sent me some clips. And then asked me some of the one minutes to get some of the rationale. He was kind of bothering me long explaining. Okay, good. Yeah, there was a, we might, well, you came up with, you got an email.
That was a classroom, they're starting this first couple of minutes. It was a Warren Burger.
Yeah.
Yeah, missed the focus on that.
Okay, I just got an email. It said Mark, also familiar, Cliff, Mark. Yeah, so, Mark Presley, who said that, uh, with Tommy's, um, uh, feel or whatever happened. Yeah, but even going into ten, that's Mark. Yeah. Anyway, uh, so, probably what Mark Presley is asking us to do is to go through the minutes. And, uh, basically perhaps formally a document relates to each change of 27. And the different parts in the meeting, what was it, discussed, and there's some yes, no, the kind of timeline fashion. And they, they want to get up to us to do it the way we wanted to do it. We just got, got back to.
I had a question, the P R I B C, Mark's tent, is that actually in front of county council? Or is that in front of planning and development in the afternoon? Because you can think them. If you normally would go to planning committee, you can think of.
I would say, yeah, services committee.
In the afternoon. So normally it goes to, normally you can go on doing one, planning and development committee in the afternoon. And then they can make a motion for it to go to council at seven P M.
To be true, and you know, his, his stuff about what Mark suggested only says that people, I can see his amendment. Mark could have, then applications can be heard by council. And a lot of things in that. And it may be, and we said, it's, it's actually a comment. It's a comment, Cliff, saying what Mark Presley says to do. And the way it's written, it sounds like it's Mark who's going to be speaking about these two things. So it could be council, may, may that be what's being, so, to explain why these two proposals are for council. And we will feel that they're modified. And so he's, when he's asking for his, just to provide that.
Is the modification going at the same time as the real? Well, at least I'm, do you see or didn't?
Yeah, it says, to be heard by council on three ten. And, um, and Hill, as a mark, has explained the two convenient laws. You know, what he's on? Okay, okay. And they won't be hearing or deciding on the details from their, from their C E C's proposal. We will have to explain the two of their purchase taken, so council can decide whether to talk with the I B C's or not. It would be good to have within a week or so.
Okay, we can hear that.
Sorry?
In introduction.
Is that what they call it? We can, they go. I think it's, the original question asked a while minutes, I mean, you reflect, I have, I have to see how, how much the minutes capture. Uh, rational, sorry, the conversation. Oh, and gleams, I can gleam something for a minute. It's a lot of, in the direction of this, right. And I think so, because, you know, he's been here, he's been here.
I think we are asking for favor. And the favor, we're not required to do this, the favor isn't to defend what happened by.
How much of the minutes?
To try to line up the minutes versus the votes in the timeline.
Yeah.
And then it's easy for people to understand, it shouldn't be twenty pages at that point, it should be fifty pages.
Right.
Kind of less words, but still.
Yep, all I've got, all I have is, um, I can try to look through them and see if I come, if I find comments that support. I was, I basically support as much of what we, what we actually proposed, the changes as possible.
But some things went off linear, you know, we talked about signing, we put it aside, and we come back, like we did with the, uh, sign color. It came back way later, you know, and also, and that's something where you could collapse the timeline almost.
Yeah, definitely, yeah. And a lot of, a lot of it has to get together and go through, put the exchange in chat. And we, we, we construct, okay, like, a group rationale. That are things that didn't end up in the plan. Like we, we proposed three changes and it's enough. So we ended up going on sale. I'm thinking the bottom segment, aren't proposed a change, but it wasn't seen. Not really together. I just, I don't, I don't think we discussed, if we took a vote, we took a vote on to none.
Yeah.
So therefore we shouldn't have.
Yeah, that's the way we were. If a vote was taken, a deal that.
I don't know, I don't think, I mean, you can do it, I mean, it matters, but, but presenting that in a document before council. And we have, you know, fifteen changes. And if, and what they want to do is, what, what rationale is for those fifteen changes? You know, three other changes that we showed Mark and Ed. You know, that they want.
You know, exactly.
Maybe if you want to look more to change, okay, uh, uh, suggest, we're using, uh, you see, I just, here on media, on place on the tree they own. And as such, people, as such, people may be thinking, uh, we, we, they have to justify our weed. Show them, show them the, or, under what is.
Um, are we having to be here? Sure, here.
What?
I was asking for, yeah, we can be, I can.
Respect like the two changes, they were trying to keep consistent with the other water shares.
Yeah.
And have this better rationale. That ours is we want to leave it alone.
Much of our conversation. So, I don't, I mean, when you give a draft, you do act a little off. That doesn't seem like a lot of. Oh, well, the other thing I was gonna say on that, on the, on the two, was just the fact, uh, in Sett Paul's initial reaction was almost underway. And war, warrior's, I think, and, and do the bigger thing, and then clearly said, go ahead, go ahead, just go ahead and pursue this one. And then as well, I can do, do the picture. And, yeah, which is, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what I heard, it's like, okay, before what you've done. Then start from the beginning, and when you start from the beginning, don't ask for a little bit, ask.
Yeah. All the.
And status of that, I'm not sure, we'll vote for more 27 members, and we never voted on the, the practical, uh, approval stuff. And we should, and we, because all the members were supposed to, supposed to read it and say, you like it or don't like it, and then you can like it. And we didn't see, we didn't like it, we liked it.
And I did that. And, and texters, too, yeah. The one that comes out, it says, uh, we wouldn't pay the public belief system.
It was just a, a recap of here's the main changes.
So we could put it out. We'll, we'll leave the. So we have to go, we have to. Okay, status of outlarge member selection. So it was, it was this, that item that sort of prompted Sett Paul to come out and meet with us and, and talk to the community. His initial inclination was clearly to not provide a fourth, a fifth member, the second outlarge member. Because he has this larger image of, of, as I've been characterizing, reforming the outer dash or reforming the middle dash, the whole committee. Um, with some different structure or whatnot. His inclination was to not provide, not, not put any member into this mix until the, the left was done and then, and then go ahead and judge with those, you know, whatever the new structure is. I think though he was responsive to the comment from me and some other people, that it would be beneficial for us to have our, so, membership, it was, I, I actually had a conversation with him.
And he indicated that the, we should continue as we have been continuing, uh, we have been doing. We will appoint somebody and then as members become, or to believe, or whatever, uh, the respective people coming up from membership.
But not, but not specifically related to, when he works in that, his, what's, whatever, in terms of, obviously, for the, the competition. Well, I'm not sure, and I'm, I'm not exactly, if he was, I'm expecting to be entirely up to him, it sounds like he was also looking to us to reach for ourselves. With the help of the two organizations and, and the, I want to, to put forth. But a different, if you want a different structure, propose a different structure to him. Could be outmembers selected, or a number of members, and, and, and whatnot. So, it did seem that he would, when he made that package. And maybe just make it an independent term, or a shorter term, or a, or two years. And because it's a, it's a, definitely, definitely, uh, we're structured and it's all happening. And I sent him a note, bear to the bill, because upon the comments, the community, I didn't vote for, for our C E C being out of town hall here. And when Sett Paul, I think, sent off, it was something uncertain, or, I don't know, vague, or, or something. There was some skepticism about how, how the language was, I mean, not a name, not a name to be forward. That would happen, how we, how we made it up, and, 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 before, uh, didn't know what was coming from Mr. Roger Serre, don't say, this is, the process we've come up seeing this, this year. And I think that's, that's, I'm not sure. Okay, I didn't get a response to that, but I just thought, I didn't know why you put that out there, but, I, I actually, I thought, I was just trying to respond to it. Uh, I just, I just, I guess the way, I guess the way, I mean, that's something, could, could we need to draw it along, it has eleven or? Um, not, well, I didn't do that before, I didn't, I didn't, if someone, if someone who's a good man was in the order, if someone in the community were to get planned, I would say it was not a action against this commission, but my personal, never.
Yeah.
And I can say, but this stage again, it's in, it's, it's, it's.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure we have, we don't make the recognition. I think, oh, we. Well, I wasn't probably, the main, the main input of this particular meeting and, uh, and the application. My mom wasn't clear about what public can have to do with that, right? I had an impression, that the, you, you got clear expression, the original program application, not anything, any item in the setup. That presumably, presumably it could landscape, so now it's landscape, it's not something.
Well, as far as I can see, the ramp standards. If they introduce it later, as they said that they are going to in the form of application, then I would say that it meets the requirements.
I also look at the fact that this is stamped off by a landscape architect. And the landscape architect, he's a Washington, he's a Waukesha County landscape architect, which means he has to review all of the codes and ensure when he designs it that it meets code.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I don't disagree with that concept in theory, but that would mean that really this group would have no purpose.
Have any?
As long as we ever have a certified architect, landscape architect involved, I mean, how would he ever review anything? We would say, oh, it's covered by, tell them you qualified to do the job, and they done it, and still we'll just focus because he works, because he's standard. So I would say that's an interesting point, not particularly positive.
Okay. But again, that's why Steve brings his checklist along, so we can check off the checklists, which weaks the design guidelines, which now says that's why again the character plan is a system.
Exactly.
I'm not gonna get there exactly.
Would it differ from mitigation, essentially, like what if, you know, how it could?
It was certainly improved by light.
So they have a cap change.
So they're not underplaying light directly up, which is really.
Yeah, a shame, but they are strict.
No, I, what I would add is that this is, I mean, what we're doing is trying to improve something that is a, in my opinion, a travesty. Now, if nobody did it, who knows? By what? It was just up to him. So, I mean, he did it, he did it as a mess. He made it, probably spent a lot of money on it, because it's all that wire on cement, a lot of labor, everything, you know, lighting fixtures.
A lot of wood.
He created a mess. And now he's going to slightly improve it, and we're going to be stuck with it for the next twenty years, until the next summer, future, when he decides to do it. So, I mean, we can, this probably can prove it, and I mean, I would recommend it be proved.
I won't be bothered. They're looking for our recommendation.
No.
I think the landscaping plan is beautiful, with the water feature and all the plantings. I think it's also hard to say right now, what you're looking at is just a bunch of light standards. Once all of this is all planted, and you have these big, beautiful, you know, those Japanese-style cherry trees, you have all these bushes and the landscape and the water feature, I think that everyone's gonna go in. Wow, that's nice.
And maybe it will be, you know, beautiful, but the light is still there, unless it was, I don't know, the finish now, but also the bushes are up to this size and huge size, and you've got probably a little light that if I was earning. And if they aren't, only the ones that know their.
That's right.
So anyway, my position of the lights are, should not be approved. They don't need this name, that is listed in two thousand fourteen. And I guess, I guess we'll take the theory that that's the case. You have three?
I saw three.
I have my group in town, so I saw many, I don't know, weeks of time.
I, I was just gonna make, Steve, with the water features, I think there's even two in there. Um, the county's trying to make him put a park in where they can light out some light. Not for me.
Okay, thanks.
I think it's probably important, um, the CC, um, the role of them in the farm situation, but if you guys do approve it, um, I think it's important to consider what they have been talking about at tax payers and the National Garden Club. And that was about the blockability in front of that whole gas station, that big Spanish cement. And if they're gonna do a garden, they could do a garden area right in the middle that's spent so that there's an obvious entrance and out. So the blockability in front is not dangerous. Probably less than the tax payers, might be, on this garden is also pretty.
It's a nice idea, I think it's a problem in the next.
No, it's a two.
Oh, separate property. Three separate properties that, if you have.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, I would check this out on the map.
This is also UPS, or what it's called here. It's also a, one, the forest was, one building is still separate, and the gas station is still, like, yeah, I mean, great if you put it.
And the heat may be something that could be considered if we're making a move. That's something that.
Yeah, it's kind of a nice place, but I think.
It's specific.
Yeah.
Literally, they're saying. We should look at.
He's being.
Well, I guess.
They were supposed to revise when I asked you. But there's no approval starting from time. So, uh, we can always say the landscaping plan looks fine, but we want you to review, and the reason I say that is because I did ask, because we are not a group that gets involved with, uh, code violation reports. And I asked the question, does the last revised landscaping and lighting plan differ from the existing lighting that was installed presumably without permit? Can PDS review and/or inspect the existing lighting without needing a violation report? The response was, the applicant did not propose lighting in the original plan. The revision has been applied for to address the unpermitted lighting. They even sent a picture out, so they've got a picture. Staff can review the building permit for consistency with conditions without a code violation report. So we can ask them if they would review the building permit for consistency and approve the landscaping, so that at least we can keep this moving forward if they need to come back to us.
Oh, I would, I would be fairly supportive of approving landscaping minus the lighting. You'd say that. Can give me a quarter dollar on the landscaping.
But what we want them to review the lighting. I personally, again, I don't think there's anything specific in here, but if we got a saw, we could put that on their table, if everybody agrees on landscaping, fine. You guys have a look at the lighting and tell us, because if it needs to. Because again, we're only talking about that property, we're not talking about the one.
Yeah, but that would be the topic of another conversation, another time.
But how do we rule, um, where it's assessed, literally?
How do you expect us to rule?
That's a good question. And I, I can only, I can only say for sure, that the current version has a huge amount of excessive whatever, if I walk and drive past that all the time, and it is. I would actually say it's a safety hazard, so by adding correctly the lighting.
It is a safety hazard.
But when it's all, when it's all viewed down like it's four, three yards, like a sign, you know, I can judge, but that would be likely if they were all like that. It would certainly be less intense now, but I would, to me, that.
That should be one of the things.
But to me, that.
I was gonna say, why don't we just ask Fred to go ahead and put those on the lights all the way in front? Because then people can actually see, because like you say, it's hard to judge with just view, and it's all.
That depends on the condition, if you have other expenses.
But it's already in his plans, so he can let it go and do it anyway.
They already seen the rule. Oh, right, you have, yeah, so you need to sign, oh, yeah, I see what I can do. But I wouldn't mind being the one who says, you should buy a bunch of covers. I mean, I'll assign if I like your covers, and I'm like, hot, I didn't spend a bunch of money on that, so I'll do it. So he doesn't have to do it.
So we have any idea whether the voltage of the voltage is to the currently connected.
There are needs, so, sure.
There are needs.
Yeah, there are needs.
And we.
Um, yeah, I just, because his entrance, his sidewalk entrance to the building is being changed to the parking lot. Does that not make the parking lot part of this application? Like, he can't, the sidewalk from the street and bulk road into the building has to be cleared. It is getting removed, like, he's like. Yes, it is. Right, so his entrance now is off that parking lot, so that parking lot is part of his plan.
Right.
So how many of these components that needs to be a block or block for in that parking lot is added?
I don't know, it's a separate property, so it had its own, I think, issues. It's not like it's anything that's got a light on the end of it, but this, that little property does kind of, there are just.
But at this part of his property, he's using it as his parking lot, so he's using it as a. It appears that it's, it's, it's right here.
So, I would ask, so all portion of that parking lot is impacted.
Yeah, the west, the eastern, the eastern strip, yeah.
It's part of, is part of the, uh, part of that, not the whole thing, which is the entrance. Enough to allow him to get that allegiance.
But you know, like, ask the planning department if he needs to do that operating.
Well, I mean, I imagine we could propose as a, as a.
You mean.
As a compromising source, that we would be willing to consider the beauty of the, of the damp, of the, kind of, term of, uh, light, uh, shield, uh, lights. If the owner was willing to do something to add further landscaping on the adjacent property, it would have to be a.
Are you talking about between the gas station and the UPS building?
From the west end of the, the.
There's no buffering required between commercial buildings?
No, the, the longer part.
I think, I think.
The whole road and.
This is all.
Yeah, up here, something that would make, something that would get in a clearer here and out of that station, and also rely on it for further utilization, that's a word. Instead of, instead of, instead of, all across the entire.
Yeah, but that's a separate property from here to here, which has nothing to do with permit from here to here.
But it would be, it would be, it would be a proposal, so if it's the same owner, and he's happy with something, and he's gonna come back and ask for it here, too, it's not for.
Review process and annoying planning process.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, that's completely, uh, purview to be able to, just because you're on the law side of it, we're gonna tell you that we want to do something with it.
Well, my, my, my position would be to say, well, I'm gonna, I would propose that this whole bond, I'm just speaking myself. My proposal would be that this whole bond says, no, we don't want to do that lighting at all. And it might be wanting to consider if on that property, um, we give some brief appreciation that might make us feel better about it, other information, again, I think, on our, and their property.
Yeah, that could seem a little bit of a bad legal purpose of saying, you're kind of holding, you know. But that's just a bad precedent to set.
But, uh. He's a lot on the street, so. I hope, I would be more active to make the motion that said we approve the landscaping. And that we, uh, and we ask Waukesha County UPS to, uh, as an angel. If they would review the building permit for consistency with conditions.
I would, yes, I would, I would be okay with saying we approve the landscaping, but we will defer to the county to review the lighting to ensure that it meets code.
Yes. Essentially, you give a line of order.
It's a two point. It's a two guys. No, it's one, it's one, I'm, I'm, that's, I'm, you have a map for this week, for, uh, it's a one reason.
Here's, here's, what kind of faster we get that, we're getting into this time of year where a lot of these plantings are going to need to start going in.
Well, no, I'm, I'm fairly happy with, with suggesting that you approve, but that's getting pushing, I mean, that's an open question. But I'm just, I'm just trying to think through what are we actually pressing them? We're just, we're just coming, we're just saying we don't want to make a decision on the lighting.
So, the landscaping is beautiful.
We should ask to approve the landscaping, and that we're wanting to defer on the lighting, because the code is assessed as clear. And we don't know what excessive clear mean, so either perhaps it can all be installed through the public health society, or, uh, we, you know, if you don't render experts, to decide where excessive clear is. But then, uh, are they, they're definitely.
They need to do the.
Yeah.
Do the permit.
Yeah.
On that. Yeah, on that aspect of it, I mean, that's not unreasonable, because that's what I asked them. We don't want to get involved in any code violation reports, we're not saying this is a violation. We just want them to show us the consistency between the two. And what, what they propose.
How are you?
Um, look, in terms of proof of landscaping, there's so many most like, to do for us. It would really help if every other most was a, a plant on the block. And that would be part of the landscape landscaping, is that would improve it and lower the light.
We remove the lamps?
Yeah, I really want, because I think if the public, I don't know why, I think they're talking about a huge amount. And then, then you can improve the landscaping.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think, I don't think it's a part of the project.
Thank God.
It's a lot harder to, you know, the water, it's a big, you know, trap, you see, then you put the lighting, but, but I want, I, I don't think it's. I think I don't.
Yeah. The landscape architect should go around.
Well, I thought I was gonna call him. Okay, so, uh, Paul, I guess we have a motion, I think, to the favor's motion.
Second.
Okay, we all have to fill this, something. If you want to not hold it, have, you'll be looking forward to it. You're gonna make it. So I don't know, I already did.
The landscaping, the, the, staff, PDS, we need to have a consistency. For that report. And most of that now, if it doesn't go right, you can't.
So, actually.
Yeah, I think, uh, official name or legal name?
Obviously.
Friday morning.
Oh, it's fifteen seventy seven.
Fifteen seventy seven. So, oh, there's a turn.
Yeah.
One, one, thirty seven, it is. Excuse me, which color do you have to, now, to, you, Christine?
Which says.
By. Oh, we got, oh, your character.
Sure, probably.
So that, or your plan is going to be specified in this?
Yeah. Well, basically, we present the twenty fourteen permit.
Yeah, no, I was getting at the, I wasn't through that. So what's the name of the permit?
There's, um, the county permit now, there is.
And all that for the next.
Okay. Was it, uh, yeah, three, was it over ten?
Yeah.
See it on?
Yes.
It just says.
Zero.
Okay.
That's zero.
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing it references is.
Okay. Okay, but, um. Size committed and limitations?
Not. Our.
Light.
Okay.
Um, so, I think we're gonna say. So we think it's not a component, it's kind of, as it is. And that's, at the bottom, it would be.
The wooden bone.
Yeah. So we can send that directly to. And I think it's. It's taken this.
That's the.
Please. However, we are projected to, however, and that's actually what you want.
So the light, I'm, I'm leaving it on the light. Yeah. That's all.
You should.
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen.
Oh, there's, it's only open.
It should.
Well, no, it's, it was, it was last week.
Oh. Okay. Okay, I just said, no, landscaping, pause. Number two, wow, this is in the notes. Light is under, I need you as well. That, uh, PDS must, uh, review. Review lighting code. Dash, uh, underneath, uh, PG. Quote, excessive glare. Uh, it's a, one excessive glare. What, what do you understand by excessive glare?
The end of the motion was to present a check of consistency. Oh, you can, you can, that's a, that's a.
Yeah, let's do, uh. So we're requesting them to review the building permit for consistency with conditions. So.
I have some feelings.
I would say that.
Well, who do you mean, law one?
Okay.
Well, I guess we'll accomplish.
All right.
I have something. So do other things on your.
I think you got one today.
Yeah.
So, please, no complaints on the whole, because.
You guys, I think, believe it, it's not expensive, I watch people. Because what we heard this, that, and the community. Also, yeah, you know, that's another, that's another, very, that, truly, very, you know. When she had said, the Waukesha County extension, it would be, it's one, kind of, actually, wouldn't it, too, because she might accomplish one of our. I mean, just to give us, us in the community, a lot of, to be here, a bit of a presentation about what she would put this larger frame, that it is, it's not, it's not recycling, also, also, composting. And, uh, I thought we, if we're wanting to have her, I would suggest we invited her.
Right.
I want to.
The previous.
But.
Maybe you'll, you're not.
Yes, uh, but you may come.
Sure.
Uh, Samantha, if we're willing to come to that, and the second one, if you come on, we can, so it's possible to come and find, and speculate, so that the community can practice things well. Um, because that, to me, well.
To, to, right now, I just want you to have her come to talk to. Just essentially to us, and, and whoever happens to be here, just in general, I think, fifteen minutes, or, I don't know, twenty minutes, or thirty minutes, to talk about what she talks about. Think about, I'm hoping from extension, you can talk about, including not, with recycling and composting.
Yeah.
But the actual thing that she would want to do, that, that would have to be scheduled by time that was useful for the community, most likely about weekend, or serious, I mean, serious.
It's, it's a serious.
So, so it would be, yeah, that would be, I think that would be scheduled for a weekend, so.
That's great, and I think that Samantha, you know, we said she started this tonight, uh, and, and it's nice to have that, I guess, notice, if you can have rankings on a regular day every month, that would be a way for those communities to come on.
Well, if you do, they're always, you know, that's gonna be.
No, but I suppose, because I know you guys were stuck last week, um, but she, she, I, I empathize with her. Uh, and some other, maybe.
But, but to be fair, I mean, we do meet on the third Thursday of the month, unless there's some, these are, I don't know, what happened last.
Just usually, the, the claims come down on Friday, so I guess not. It's done, you know. So, so, so you did say, let's try and include the.
If we do what we can.
Um, would the, the, what's the lady, um, what's the lady, Sandy, what she proposed for time?
Well, she hasn't proposed for, she's willing to counterpart in our meetings, so I'm gonna propose to her, she come for our April meeting just to give us our, a degree, a description of, description of what it is she's been offering the community. And then we'll have to figure out a time that works more for the community and for us. So for the community.
Well, we're always gonna have to find out, is there enough people who want to actually take force, in force, to actually make it work a lot more? To do. Which is gonna take some, a lot of community outreach at that.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not giving. I have a first question for the other. Oh, um, I knew, it's how I knew that.
We did email, so we didn't forget.
Yes, well, I al, I almost forgot myself.
I actually did wrote it down, I'm like, oh, he said, don't forget.
So we have this letter from county, from county, uh, of Colorado. And, and I, 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 we're sending letters to.
I brought it with me.
Yeah, Austin, um, if you ask, I, I asked for, uh, our letters to, one, we can executive, we want to, um, counsel. Uh, I'm not sure that, um, I, 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 I would actually count it, but I was interested to get into it. And the other one was the letter asking them to consider our changes, and so to, 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 uh, to, to. So my proposal to this group is that we vote tonight, and then we'll session it. About those two letters, without proving them, for submission, and I will then stand there, if there's a pool. One of them is just to slightly worry the other, after we, uh, election results. I took the, I took Christopher, uh, and asked him to modify it to consider this. If it's about the county executive, that is actually truly the useful process, and I would have to mean, county executive, we're doing this right now, that process, whether it's, so, or slightly modified, it's essentially the same letter So, my, or slightly modified, essentially the same letter, uh, the year before, and put forth, uh, it's, uh, separately, uh, for us, uh, for, uh, and, 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 so I would propose to resend that letter to, to county's office, to county executive's office. And then we need to resend, the version that I actually sent to county council about the twenty seventy-two issue, where I did not say that it should, uh, I had a language issue. Reject that proposal, and do that, and say, uh, and, 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 and.
Uh, letter for Pam was part of my understanding of the stuff, was actually going to the pond. I actually sent that.
I do remember part of the, the process.
I would just suggest the letter that was sent to council regarding twenty seventy-two, that you sent out, uh, because that was the only problem.